All righty. Next up is Roger Leahy.
Hi, I'm Roger Leahy from Ward 1. Thanks for hearing me. And I was going to talk about, or I am going to talk about the history of the problem and the solution of the problem with the Walton Lake. And some of that, since it's history, some of that may be not new, but I think there's some people that haven't heard it, and I think some of it we discussed in a private meeting and maybe you haven't been heard of by the chances. So I'm going to proceed. So the Walton Club has a history there. They've leased that property for eighty-four years and they themselves, but they built the golf course on it. They built two bridges on that, golf cart bridges on that location. And they had pretty much assumed they would continue that responsibility of maintaining and/or building. And I've heard a conversation where some of the members there who were contractors said, hey, we could get together and do this on a weekend or something. And so there was a general expectation that they would be responsible until they found out the city was planning to do it. So and our, that's the second point is in our interpretation, the city misinterpreted the lease, and the city has only per the lease to quote, maintain or repair the bridge, not rebuild or replace it. And there are case studies in Iowa laws stating that, you know, repair or maintain does not mean replacement or particularly replacement with it entirely different product than was originally there and a very high capital expenditure. So the city has wanted to do more than just replacing kind. They want a more expensive or overbuilt causeway culvert system that would require draining the lake. Less expensive bridge options were not fully explored. I think we could have done, I feel like the city could have done a lot more in finding lower cost alternatives. One lower cost alternative which you heard about was Tom Tarian back in last October of twenty twenty-four. He turned in some information to, I think, his Ward 1 city council member about an eighty-foot aluminum bridge. And recently, there's been information, actually a quote, a bridge coming out of Missouri, it was thirty to thirty-seven thousand dollar bridge quote. And so there are other choices out there that I think due diligence could allow that. So the city's current quote is one hundred and ninety-six thousand, and that's for that big eight-by-ten box culvert, which itself costs one hundred and twelve thousand. And there was some discussion at the last meeting where they say there would be some other expenses. So I have a feeling that means more money. And then there's other tangential costs, like if the city provides free water, there's some estimate that's like thirty thousand dollars worth of water at retail. And see, I've heard it's even ten thousand to connect the irrigation system to city water. So anyway, so and not, and mitigating smell, reshocking fish. I gotta be faster. Iowa Constitution, Article 3, Section 31 said, quote, "No public money or property shall be appropriate for local or private purposes." The Walton Club has only about a hundred and twenty golf memberships, I've heard, who use that golf cart bridge. And there's an obvious sign right there before you go across the causeway under the bridge that says, "Private use only by Walton Club members," or something to that effect. It's a very obvious sign, and we've got pictures of it, and we can show you that. The review of the process lacked adequate public notice. Nobody was told, even more recently, that the lake would be fully drained, which is eleven and a half feet out of eleven and a half feet in that main basin, and likely kill a hundred percent, a hundred percent fish kill off. So no public forum was organized to discuss it. We had been told the city council that the property committee would hold public meetings to get input, but no meetings had been called. The city says, "We own the property, so we can do what we want with the lake." But ownership really does not grant absolute rights to ignore the constitution, fiscal responsibility, the environment, or a public trust. We have received private pledges now totaling twenty-seven thousand to help, to either help the Walton Club to repair or replace the golf cart bridge, or alternately to use those funds to somehow get the city to stop their current plans to drain the lake and overbuild the causeway culvert system. I've contributed substantially at myself. And we've, I've also received legal advice that others in our group have. I spoke with a large law firm who does our company's work, and they quoted a retainer just through the injunction phase of twenty-five thousand. And the estimate through a full court case could easily run us fifty thousand. Now, we'd much rather support the golf cart bridge with our money than waste it on legal fees, and we'd rather not be going against the city. We've also tried some less cost methods recently. We filed, you know, a stay with the DNR because we felt that application didn't bring out all the facts about the fish kill off and so forth. We've also filed with Rob Sand, the state auditor, and with Brenda Byrd, the state attorney general, to see if we can get some further input. So I've got a thirty-second conclusion. As a minimum, please pause the process, reexamine the lease's actual requirements to repair the golf cart bridge, and work with the Walton Club to renew their lease. Find a way to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. And much better is a solution that was proposed in the open letter, the open letter to the Farrickham City Council concerning Walton Lake. And I think you're going to hear more about that this evening. That would be a win for all parties, the taxpayers, the Walton Club, the Walton Lake residents, the city, and the fish. Thanks for your time.
I may add, I'm in Ward 4. Listening to Roger and other stuff in lots of these council meetings, sometimes I get this sense that we're in some kind of a cosmic joke here. Like we're a bunch of children playing cowboys and Indians. You guys get behind the fort and defend it, and we'll attack the thing. Then, as you said, Connie, what we really need is something to bring us together, to help us bridge this chasm. So what better to bridge a chasm than?
Than a bridge.
A bridge. This particular bridge is an Overman Bridge. It's built by Overman Steel and Bath in Joplin, Missouri. It's made out of, uses a construction process called steel pipe construction that makes it very economical to build and very, very strong. I got my files messed up. Okay, so we did look at buying the London Bridge, but when we saw that we could get a steel pipe construction, we decided, why bring a bridge over that apparently is always falling down? This is another Overman Bridge over a body of water. This bridge, our version of this bridge is going to cost between twenty-nine thousand dollars and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That range is based on the condition of the approaches that are found by Jonathan Overman when he comes to expect. We did look at a dam at one point, but we felt like it was too expensive and we wanted to save money. We also were looking at the DNR's recommendation where they advised against a dam, even a silt dam, which I think could be extrapolated to the culvert system where it does lessen the water flow between the two lakes. So the lakes are divided. The North Lake silts up and creates a dredging problem. This is another Overman Bridge. Our bridge will be rated at eight thousand pounds. A golf cart weighs between eight hundred and twelve hundred pounds. We can actually stage our own traffic jams on our bridge, if that's what we want. The only problem with our bridge is that, and this will be bad news for some of us who wanted to drive our ambulances across this bridge, you won't be able to drive your ambulance on our bridge. This bridge we looked at, but the price of this bridge includes troubled waters, and we've got untroubled waters in this project already. Ten thousand dollars of the cost of our bridge will be transporting the bridge. So this is a very strong bridge because of the steel pipe construction. It's a cheap bridge because it's prefabricated in the factory and then brought here and installed. Our price of twenty-nine to thirty-seven thousand will be inclusive of the transportation, which is ten thousand dollars, and the installation with the crane. Oh. Well, I have to admit, we did buy the Brooklyn Bridge, but when we went to claim it, to bring it down here, it turned out that the deed was no good. I don't know how that happened. So we had to start from square one. And square one involved looking at these bridges from Overman. Jonathan Overman has talked extensively with Larry Paget, and knows more about the bridge than anybody in this room, and he's talked extensively with me. He has assured us that this bridge is insurable because it's already, Overman-style bridges are installed on government facilities and on business facilities that absolutely require insurance, so insurance is not an issue here. He has also offered us a forty-year warranty on this bridge. Well, we went up to Madison County and tried to buy one of their bridges, but it turns out the government officials in Madison County love bridges. And they said, if you want a bridge, go build your own. I hope you will. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is your bridge, is it being placed on the current piers that are not safe?
It'll be clearer absolutely once Jonathan Overman can come here, which he's keen to do as soon as we can give him something other than we're tilting against the windmill still the city government. If we could get the Walton Club to be authorized to explore this process, we could get Overman to come and explore. As it is, he has looked at photographic evidence and talked extensively with Larry. Their standard process is to, our bridge will be eighty feet, the gap is seventy-two feet. So their, the Overman Bridge would go four feet on each side. Their standard process, the bridge is ten inches thick, is to dig down ten inches, four feet past the gap, and then sit it in level with the concrete. He said if he gets here and finds that that structure underneath at four feet is not good, then they'll stay on top of the concrete, and then they'll have to pay, charge some extra to ramp it up to the level. If it's worse than that, and he has to do some concrete, that's when we get to the thirty-seven thousand. So there are options about how it goes, but none of them, as I understand it, involve sitting on these fallen abutments. Do you get that sense? Is that, is that what we're doing, Larry? And if he finds that it's not safe at eighty?
Larry, come, please come to my house.
He indicated that if it wasn't safe at eighty feet, they could make it eighty-four feet, or they can manufacture any size, any length of bridge. They should take this.
So these are built to order?
Yes. This will be built to order, and we're paying two hundred and fifty dollars per linear foot at eight feet wide to be a car path, a golf cart. So if we have to go further, we have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for an extra foot. We have to go a foot on each side, that's an extra five hundred dollars on top of either the twenty-nine, if we're starting there, or all the way up to the thirty-seven. But even at any of those rates, we're still at forty thousand.
And he said they would bring up cranes to install this, that'd be a billion install for that thirty-seven thousand dollars, so we won't have to get an outside contractor to come in and try to set this bridge in. He said two to four people can put it together and crane it into its spot. It's very simple. It makes it sound similar to a building. But very good company, very, they're known throughout the high schools. They have built a lot of bridges for a lot of municipalities, parks. I feel comfortable with it.
Get a person's fish off that bridge while a golf cart goes by? Get a person's fish off that bridge while a golf cart goes by? Because that's what you have today.
It's eight foot wide, golf cart's four feet.
Again, I'm not a bridge expert either, but it sounds to me like there's a lot of cost missing, but we don't know that yet.
A lot of what?
Cost missing because we know the piers underneath are not sound.
There's some piers. Well, yes.
Name's abutments.
Name, name abutments.
Yeah.
But at two hundred and fifty dollars a foot, that's, we can go along those, find yourself.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we can move to Ed Noise down to the bottom. So Vasna Lovita.
So Vasna Lovita here, Ward 1, back again. And, well, which of you has ever seen a juvenile heron test its legs in the shallows of a quiet lake, or felt the rush of a bald eagle's wings as it levers its body into the air? Have you ever watched trumpeter swans as they come into land and put aside care as a young stag that most hunted of creatures finds its moment of peace in a small grassy inlet which it too is threatened by our city's unlovable plans for Walton Lake? As it hides its beautiful body and antlers in the ruff of trees that border the lake, which many of them as well will die if Walton Lake is drained? I haven't seen these things myself, but the residents of Walton Lake have and do, and I celebrate a world where such things still are possible. I celebrate the fact trumpeter swans are recovering from near extinction, that they're fussy about their water, that Walton Lake passes muster as a stockover point in their yearly migrations. The fact Don Holting has identified the bird songs and calls of over sixty different species around Walton Lake encourages the rest of us to stand up for our planet rather than writing it off as lost. And many things that I do enjoy, like many of you enjoy, are possible only because Walton Lake extends its quiet welcome to the shy and magnificent creatures who cannot thrive in busier lakes, on busier, more crowded shores. They live as nature fashioned them. Their options frankly are few and shrinking. But it's from these precious bits of habitat that they venture out into our skies, into our trail system, into the hearts and future of our children. Put another way, when the rare osprey is able to build its nest in one location, we're gifted the chance to spot it in so many others. It's all a single tapestry. Walton Lake is unique among our public lakes. Killing it impoverishes the rest. I was warned you'd roll your eyes at yet another appeal for environmental compassion, but I don't believe you're so utterly indifferent to this living, breathing, sentient planet and the living, breathing, sentient beings who live here, starting with us, your constituents. And so I implore you, please, to abandon your current plans for Walton Lake. Goodness knows, we all make mistakes. As humans, we're blessed with blind spots and genius both. The blind spots keep us humble. Genius allows us to soar. The social fabric taps both to the advantage of all. Walking away from the choices we've made, which no longer serve us, is a critical social skill and art. Meanwhile, your disregard for communication, for your budget, and for your constituents have taken a lot of people by surprise. From our side, the citizens of Fairfield dropped the ball in failing to insist you partner with us in a meaningful way. Frankly, we didn't know how much you needed us and let things slide. But your insistence on using a bridge to dig a hole in the very heart of our community forces us to expand the meaning of public-private partnerships beyond the business deals and vanity projects which cause so much exasperation and grief. What kind of hole are you digging? A big one. We're not living on some monopoly board where you can just punch a few holes and continue to play around those holes. The natural world is a web. The social fabric is a web. Trust is a web. Punching holes in webs collapses them. You tell us you own Walton Lake and can do what you like with it. In fact, it's the city that owns Walton Lake, and we are the city. You've reminded us pointedly that it's a man-made lake, but nature has adopted this lake and is using it today to organize this crazy, messy, snowballing opportunity for a community and its leadership to come together in the only social unit that will ever deliver the future we all long for, which is collaboration. Thank you for your time.
James Sinton.
James Sinton, Ward 1. I spent a couple of hours collecting a hundred petitions, signatures or so this weekend at the Art Work and the Farms Market in support of a motion for the city to hand over the Walton Golf Club Bridge project to the Walton Club. Nearly everyone I approached signed, and the three who would not sign simply never signed petitions. Everyone else was appalled by the city's position, and many thanked me profusely for collecting the signatures and giving them this opportunity to be heard. In many ways, I feel I am speaking for them as I stand before them. Fairfield has been gifted a massive opportunity relating to the Walton Golf Cart Bridge, which can magically transform a difficult, expensive, potentially disastrous situation into a win for all. The emerging legal situation which the city now faces can be avoided if the city chooses to hand the golf bridge project back to the ready and willing Walton Club. The city will save one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars plus unspecified additional costs. The lake will not need to be drained, leaving the wildlife undisturbed and allowing residents to enjoy their homes without the stench and heartbreak of watching the lake die. The Walton Lake Golf Club will use existing and promised donations to install a fully insured, fully warranted replacement bridge from a reputable company, as we've heard, for only thirty-seven thousand or so, without draining the lake. What a narrow escape. What else does this narrow escape involve? The solution the city is currently pursuing will have a lasting impact on the ecology and function of the lake, even years into the future, as the lake attempts to rebirth itself. The current bridge spans actually seventy-one or seventy-two feet from one end of the causeway to the other. The stretch of unobstructed water flow allows the lake to function as a single body of water ecologically. If this is replaced by a single eight-foot-by-ten-foot box culvert, the gap by which one half of the lake water connects to the other will be released, will be reduced by at least ninety-four percent. The single box culvert will reduce the flow rate disastrously, effectively creating two half lakes with a potential for atrophy in the shallower half in the north and a disturbed circulation for the deeper half lake to the south. A large body of water needs its full circulatory system to benefit from its size. A larger ecosystem can host a more complex diversity of life. Using a single box culvert to connect two smaller half-bodies of water does not equate to a full-size lake ecosystem. Lake circulation is influenced by a lake's physiology. Proper circulation is essential for a balanced aquatic ecosystem. Normal lake circulation is complex, affecting oxygen levels, nutrient distribution, fish populations, and the presence of harmful algal blooms. This is why the DNR pointed out that sticking with the current bridge configuration is the best option for the health of the lake. As Fairfield continues to evolve its relationship with the natural world, city leaders will eventually wake up to the importance of restoring full circulation to this precious body of water. At such time, they will face the extraordinary expense of removing the fifteen-ton box culvert and the expanded causeway, adding to the lifetime cost of the project. Managing this without draining the lake all over again will only deepen our city's regret at overbuilding this golf cart bridge into a massive construction project which Fairfield cannot afford at the moment, and apparently the citizens do not want, and will eventually want to remove. A narrow escape of such magnitude with massive savings to the city seems true to everyone's interest, blessing for all.
Ed Noise?
Thank you very much. My name is Ed Noise, I'm Ward 1. And just a very quick summation of how the decisions were made, what information was given to the city council and the subcommittees when they made the determinations that they made. Fundamentally, and most importantly, it was assumed that the city was required to replace the golf cart bridge. They were told after it was referred that the probable cause simply replacing the bridge would be around two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that the culvert system was much cheaper, and that it would be extra beneficial to allow emergency vehicles to cross under the golf course as a reason for our culverts. That the suspension bridge design offered by Tom Tarian would not meet the requirements of the golf course. And further, that no bridge could be built that was long enough to span the seventy-one foot opening is all part of the public record. At the time of the votes, no one knew that the lake would need to be drained to install a culvert at twelve and a half feet, and did not know that this would result in the entire lake going dry except in a small area. Obviously, it wasn't known that all the fish in the lake would die due to oxygen depletion and overheating. You also didn't know that the Walton Club would lose the ability to irrigate their greens with lake water, and that their grass would die unless the city gave them up to thirty-five thousand dollars worth of water out of the Jordan Valley, which may very well be illegal in and of the South. You further didn't know that the DNR would state publicly that it was healthier for the lake to allow free flow of water under the bridge, obviously preferring the suspension bridge option. That was the public DNR statement at this table. And as James pointed out, that the, even the improved box culvert concert, concept would block ninety-four percent of the water flow. You surely didn't know that the homeowners of the lake would be in an uproar and unanimously opposed the draining of the lake. You didn't know that three hundred and sixteen citizens would sign a petition. You've been given these, by the way, I just have the originals, in a matter of four to five hours of talking to them, very much opposed to this, after they read the open letter to the city council, which was published in the paper and given to each member of the city council. As a result, you can see that the votes of the city council and the committee were based on very significant and important misunderstandings and lack, and/or lack of relevant facts. But at least we can understand why the council voted as they did. That was what they, basing their information on, what I just recited. When I looked at this issue, for some reason, a voice of Jesus came into my brain, and he said, when he was being crucified, he said, "Forgive them, Father, for they know not what they do." I think we can apply that in this situation. I think the city council and the committees can be forgiven. But now we know a lot more. We know a lot more. We now know that the lease only required the city to repair and/or maintain the bridge. And perhaps most importantly, that the Iowa Supreme Court, in the case of Post versus Davis County, involving the maintenance of a bridge specifically held that repair and/or maintain did not include replacing with a new bridge. That's the case today. We've been provided that information, and we've lived around it. And further, the Iowa Attorney General's office had also issued a ruling saying the same thing. If you look at it in the light of these court decisions, it is clear that the responsibility for the golf cart bridge has always resided with the Walton Club, just like it did when they built the first two bridges. The city has absolutely no responsibility to pay for the Walton Club's bridge. This is irregardless of the public use doctrine issue, which many feel is a use of public money for primarily a private purpose. It's independent of that analysis. It effectively removes the ability of the city to spend money on this because they simply don't have the authority to do it under the lease. It certainly gives an unnecessary expense of the city at a time when the city's budget is in a crisis mode. I was told by a friend that last year, he's on the board of the library, for example, that the city came and said, "I'm sorry, we don't have the money to give you. We're going to have to cut your budget by thirty-five thousand dollars." This is just one example. I'll finish as fast as I can. There are many other examples. We all know about the roads, conditions, and everything else. We know about the fire station, the problems they're having with the fire station. We know about all this stuff. We also know now that the Walton Club has expressed a willingness to complete this on their own, using volunteers and fundraising drives. And frankly, it's an insult to assume that the Walton Club can't do this. They have an unbelievable array of contractors, construction people. They have a civil engineer that now is part of the club. Drish, Roger Drish, is a member of the club. They have doctors and people They have doctors and people that live on the lake that are already donating for this. They've done it before and they can do it again. And I think we don't want to insult the spirit of volunteerism. I think the spirit of volunteerism is a, is a very important part of any community. And if they're willing to do it, then all you have to do is give them a lease that says you may do this, they will say yes. I can tell you right now, they will say yes, they will take this over and they will end this. And as a result, we will all be blessed. Jesus said, "Blessed are the peacemakers." Well, we've got an opportunity tonight for everyone to be blessed. I was told that this is the most contentious issue that's appeared before the city council in 10 years. I believe that's probably true. And we have a lot of people that really want this resolved. The legal matter could go on for a long period of time regardless of what might happen next Monday. You all know that. I'm sure John will do that. It's simply a matter of letting them do it. Simply let them do it. They want to do it, they will do it like they did before. Finally, you would bless the homeowners, you would bless all the creatures that live there, you would bless the city's budget. And most importantly, you would demonstrate to the people that a decision that you made in the past, and now we know it wasn't based on very important information, that you can change your mind, that you can look at it now and say, "You know what? That's a better idea. That's a better idea." And save everybody all this money and heal the community.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate everybody being almost on time, under your five minutes. We've gone over a couple times, but again, I want to appreciate that. So I wrote some notes because there, I feel there is confusion about how we got here. I mean, there, you know, I'm hearing a lot of things that aren't quite accurate and so kind of bringing this around so hopefully clear up a few things for some of our citizens that don't, don't fully understand what's been going on. And so first off, I want to say that up, up until this point, up until now, the city has not taken a different direction. They do feel it, they have a contractual obligation, not only with Walton Lake, but also with our bettor that we signed and approved and passed. So it's important that I think this body observes their contractual obligations and follows through. I mean, I don't think you want this board to not follow through on contractual obligations that they have. That's, you know, that's one thing. Going back, you know, last year, when the bridge and the abutments were deemed not safe and had to be closed by Calhoun Burns and Associates. At that time, the city directed our city engineer and with the help of French Renterer, we received three options. So the council heard three options. Culvert replacement, which was an estimate of around $150,000. Replacing the bridge estimate, which was $264,000. And French Renterer has those numbers, so. And we looked at widening Walton Road and that was, you know, not really feasible. So the culvert system was chosen because it was the most cost-effective. Then, you know, the engineering specs were required, lowering of the lake to clean, to clean out that curved bridge and those abutments and replace them. So the cost of the bid accepted was $196,000. But, you know, the, the actual cost and bid was more than the estimate, but far lower than the bridge. And so we looked at backfilling with rock to not lower the lake. Unfortunately, that cost grew to $371,000. And the bridge option to not lower the lake and use cofferdams added another, we don't know for sure, but an estimated guess is $100,000 because cofferdams are expensive to build and you'd have to build on each side. So the current box culvert worth, earth bill is less expensive than the bridge from shore to shore. Lowering the lake is a temporary situation. It's not permanent. I want people to really know that that is, it's temporary. It's not, we're getting rid of it forever. So I'm, I'm kind of just giving you numbers and where we've been up to this point and ask the council to, if they have any comments.
Eric, Tom?
I'd like to say something, Mayor. Just because I have, obviously, I've been to a lot of city council meetings and I've read the newspaper and I, you know, read the open letter to the council. And while I'm not going to respond to that specific narrative because I think that there's a lot of misinformation, I do think it's important to just note how we got here and the mayor, you know, laid out quite a bit of the history. But essentially, it does come down to the city's liability in this case because we own the lake, we own all that land that is leased to the golf course. So I understand that this is the city and you are part of the city, but we are liable ultimately for what happens over that lake and what happens around that lake. So if we're thinking about an extra expenditure now that may save us from additional legal expenses due to our liability in the future, that's something that we're considering too. And we also will say that we determined what our liability was and that was based on our city engineers, excuse me, our city attorney's opinion as, as well as outside counsel. And that's what we based some of our decisions on. The fact of the matter is, any bridge that we put there, we would have to lower the lake because of the abutments. The abutments are what the issue is. And so even if we removed the bridge, we would have to lower the lake. And this is coming from our city engineer. I haven't heard an engineer speak tonight, nor at any previous time, who can counter what our city engineer has said, in addition to our outside engineers at French Renterer, who has given us their opinions as well. You know, the fiscal responsibility, people are talking about this as a financial decision and how we're, we're really wasting city funds here. If we were really being fiscally responsible, we probably wouldn't lease this land to Walton Club at all. We would lease it to somebody else who would pay more money. But the fact of the matter is that all the decisions the city has made have really been to the benefit of Fairfield and in terms of economic development. You know, allowing for there to be an amenity like a golf course, whether or not you partake in that or not, it's still an amenity and it still improves the economic development in Fairfield. Residential development out there, I know a lot of you have benefited from that decision that the city has made. And I think that everybody is just ignoring those previous decisions and the use of foresight that the city has, has used in making these decisions. So I see a lot of really grouchy people out there staring at me. But I will also point out that, as the mayor pointed out, we have entered into a contract at this time. Any additional legal, quasi-legal agitation is costing the city, you, more money. That's what's happening.
Not true.
So I appreciate that everyone's really upset and they want to continue to see through all of these legal actions, but we've already entered into a contract. And any other bridge that we would look at would require a lowering of the lake.
Not true.
Not true.
So I haven't heard from our engineer who said otherwise and that's what I'm going to be basing my opinion on.
Okay, thank you. Ed, please. Your slide's done now?
Yeah, it's my time to talk.
So, Doug?
Yes.
I think you have some comments.
I do have some comments. All right, so first of all, I want to say that we have an obligation to be good, if not exceptional stewards of taxpayer money. I've done a lot of international grants with Rotary. Our motto is, we treat, we treat the money that's given to us to fulfill a project as if it were a sacred trust. And I think the council should adopt the same attitude toward the money that we receive from taxpayers. It's also common upon, common upon us that we maintain the trust of our citizens and that we work on maintaining and building that trust continuously. And if we don't, it will slowly erode to the point where we're in the situation right now and even before that, typically, people do not trust government. So to comment upon us to make sure that we do everything we can to encourage their trust and faith in us. They judge us by our actions, not by our works. So over the past few months, I've come to the conclusion that we failed on both of these counts on this particular case. So it's absolutely clear to me that this bridge replacement is not a responsibility of the cities. That's a discretionary expense. Why are we going down this road? I don't think we've gotten a very clear answer as to why we're doing it this way. And I don't think the public has received a satisfactory answer either. And most citizens do not oppose projects for which they have a clear understanding, understanding of the justification for it. And that's not present in this situation. Council has been advised to dig its heels in, to maintain the position that we are the decision makers, that the Walton Club is our property and that we can do with it as we please. These are quotes, are paraphrases that have actually been used. I think that position is wrong. This is not, this behavior is not a reflection of good governance. It's not. It's not the way you talk to your citizens. You don't threaten them with legal action. You don't bully them. You have to listen to them. Aside from that, we've already talked about the money. Okay, not everything that was said here on the council side is accurate either, to my knowledge, and I was party to most of those decisions and conversations. But all that aside, the cost today is about $196,000. It'll be higher than that. The true cost is higher than that. We look at the fire station as an example. We're putting a fire station, it's going to be a new order of seven to eight million dollars. I think we're over eight million dollars now. We had set aside a contingency of $500,000. Contingency is what I expect to cause. We've already spent over $400,000 of that contingency and we have not even laid a single brick yet. I, so that means we have about $50,000 to $70,000 of contingency money left. I think we're gonna need money for, I feel like, more money. So I don't think this is a wise expense, since it's a discretionary expense in light of that situation, I, I question whether it's a good decision. Our employees have been run through the wringer. They are stressed out. They are spending a lot of time and energy on this matter. They're, they're expending not only time, but their physical strength and their emotional strength might be at the end of its rope for some people. I think we see some evidence of that. And I don't think it's fair for the city to continue to run them that way, considering the fact that they're already overworked. Adding this additional burden on top of their work week, evenings, et cetera, is a fair condition to put on them. It does them a disservice. I asked the DNR when they were here what the best option is for that lake from an ecological point of view. The DNR told us clearly, without hesitation, "Bridge is best." It's on the YouTube video. I watched it with the city administrator one day. We're gonna find out, I guess, when the state auditor reports in whether this is a, a loud expense under the fair use provision with the Constitution of Iowa. I have asked council that because of the trust issue and I told them, I can answer questions all day long and I can tell you, a citizen, what our city engineer said or what the city attorney said or whatever, and citizens don't care because they don't believe us at all. And I was seeking out an objective third party to give us unbiased, uninvolvement I didn't get a positive reaction, but I understand other people are pursuing those avenues and so we will eventually find out what the facts are in that regard. The fact that the bridge option would cost more, I know that quotes from French Renterer were $256,000 and $275,000 from the other engineering firm. And that, that was more than the culvert design, which was estimated at $200,000 by the city engineer. The original bid by Drish was $146,000. We started that project and after we got into it, we found that we needed more of the round of culverts to make the span. And that raised the price to $196,000. And that's how we got to that number. Notwithstanding the fact that the bridge option would cost us $50,000 or $55,000 more, well, why aren't we doing it the right way and spend the extra money rather than shortchange the lake and the community and doing something less than what's best recommendation by the DNR? If we can't afford to do it right, maybe we shouldn't do it just yet. And when we can afford to do it correctly, then we'll do it that way if, if it's gonna be allowed by the auditor. We want to make that decision later. But why should we shortchange the opportunity we have now to do it the correct way? This is irreversible, well, virtually irreversible. So if the DNR had been brought in earlier, we might very well have made a different decision. But we didn't have that fortune of their advice. And, you know, I think now we can see there are gaps in the way we made this decision. We weren't fully informed and we have gained a lot more information since we started this project. So I would like to make the motion that we place this project on pause and allow the Walton Lake community, in cooperation with the Walton Lake Golf Club, to explore and implement, or implement a solution of their own choosing. So when they bring their gentleman up from Missouri to look at this construction site, then we will know what has to be done to help on his bridge, as he said, and we will have a final answer on that. There's no doubt that that bridge would be insurable and, well, we've had a bridge like that there for 80 years and there was never a question asked about it. So that's my motion to the council that we pause this project and allow them to go forward with their investigation.
So I would like the Polymeterian, Mr. Morrissey, since we don't have that kind of discussion on our agenda, can he bring up, make that motion at this time or do we need to put it on the agenda for next time?
Well, you might have to put it on the agenda for next time and it probably needs more to it. We have an argument with the Inspection and Appeals Division on the DNR permit next Monday. And if we're gonna pull this thing off the table, that leaves us some other circumstances that we have to rectify as far as the state of things that already happened. This thing, when it was bid last week...
The question is, can I make the motion or not? That's all.
Well, aren't we in, weren't we making statements?
In fact, I've already made the motion.
Were you asking the council to make statements? Wasn't the, weren't we in the process with council, making, you asked council to proceed?
I did ask the council for statements and he gave a statement and he made a motion, but I'm, I'm concerned that we need to, we weren't expecting that, that, that topic isn't on as an action item here.
If I may.
And that we should put that as an action item on the next council meeting.
We do make motions based on the topics in the public forum appearance section. In fact, we made one tonight, giving Paul Stokes the go-ahead for his presentation.
In fact, we made one tonight, giving Paul Stokes the go-ahead for his piano. I'd like to second the motion.
But having a piano in the park is way different than the topic we were just here, so.
I'm sorry, Mary, but I need to make sure the motion is irrelevant. The privilege is to make the motion regardless of what you even like or not.
I'm not saying whether I like it or not. I just wanna make sure that we're doing it the proper way, that's all.
It's like we did the parliamentarian's speech.
All right, well, you know, if you want the rest of my thought on it, it does need to be an action item. It does need to be on the agenda. I think if there's people on the other side of this that wanna be part of that when the council acts, they definitely wouldn't have any notice of it tonight, which has been a complaint of the group all summer. This thing is coming to this point as far as both what I'm gonna call the pending legal situations that also have to be rectified and the pending appeal argument next Monday, which, you know, if you do the motion, probably that has to be explained to Inspection and Appeals and withdrawn as far as our motion. And if that's gonna be part of the full discussion here, you should be discussing the rest of that before you talk about a outcome determinative motion like this. And probably you can rule it out of order, and then the council can determine whether they wanna override you. And that's probably a motion that there's probably a couple people here that might be inclined to make. So my suggestion is allow the continued discussion, then see what the motion turns into. If it's still the same motion, if you hold the rule, the council has an opportunity to use parliamentary strength as far as a two-thirds overrule to still go ahead with it. So that's my two cents worth.
Okay, so will you repeat the motion again?
Is to place the project on pause until the rest of the-
Should I describe the project in detail?
No, just the motion.
So my motion, as I've written it down here, I don't know what I said a minute ago, was to move that we place a pause on this project, meaning the Walton Club Bridge Project. Allow the Walton Lake community, in cooperation with the Walton Golf Club, to explore and maybe implement their solution, a solution of their choosing for this project. And I have a role called up.
So there was a second to that motion?
Now, is that a reversal of a previous motion?
Sorry?
Is that a reversal of a previous motion? The council voted, I believe, to award a contract to the Drish Construction Company to proceed with this project. So that was approved by the council. So this is a reversal of that motion.
No, it's a pause.
The pause of the motion.
What they used specifically was pause that chose it on purpose.
I'm not, that's a change, because we had voted to-
Well, it's a change.
So we had voted to, we had voted to go ahead and proceed, and we had awarded the project to the Drish Corp Construction Company some months ago. So this is a pause, or you call it a pause if you want, but it's a reversal. That requires-
It's a pause.
It requires, I believe, parliamentarian, does that require a supermajority?
Supermajority would-
A supermajority?
Simple.
I'm asking him.
Now, I think simple.
Okay, so let's have discussion, discussion on the motion.
If I wanted to cancel the project, if I wanted to do it that way, I would ask to rescind a prior motion.
Right.
I'm not asking for that.
What does a pause look like with a contract that we've already signed?
Let's get some times down as far as the parliamentary process here. Last spring, you approved a bid. The bid was awarded after the approval. You had thirty days. Everybody at the lake had thirty days to file a motion for certiorari to challenge that and stop it. That didn't happen. And we got into this discussion about all the different environmental considerations and things that should be changed and so forth. And that's been going on all summer. But the award of the contract wasn't ever a time we challenged as far as certiorari. So that contract's out there, and it's been sitting there all summer. That's one thing. When Paul's asking about, are we rescinding a prior action? You could've made a motion to reconsider that last spring. The council meeting after your action in the positive is when you make a motion to reconsider. That didn't happen with the council, and the citizens didn't take any action to move a court in what they call certiorari for wrongful determination. And that's been a fixed situation ever since that letting and award. So that's something else you've gotta consider what you're doing here right now. Coming forward, you've been looking at other ways to do it cheaper. You've been looking at other ways to get around honoring the contract that's been in effect since last March, actually. That's when the decision was made about going forward with the lowest bidder. So you've got that to deal with on top of whether you're also going past. Two meetings ago, this council did an action item after the engineer talked to you about going forward, and your motion at that time was to go forward. Then you had a special council meeting after there was a stay that was a result of getting a permit for a drawdown. And coming out of closed session, a motion to vacate the stay was filed, and that's what's coming up for a hearing next Monday. And that's the status of the legal calendar right now. But that's only part of what you're considering here, because what I think you're doing is about one meeting late, doing a motion to reconsider what you said about going ahead two meetings ago. And at this point, Paul's question about whether you're rescinding a prior action, probably what you're trying to do isn't going back and reconsidering the motion to go ahead two meetings ago? Isn't that what you're doing?
I'm just asking the council to pause and let them proceed with their analysis, with their gentleman from Georgia.
Technically, legally paused anyway.
We are.
We cannot proceed with this. So why would it make it worse for us to just pause it on behalf of council rather than just waiting for a legal opinion? So then when the legal opinions come back, then we can make a decision based on all of the information that we didn't have in March of this year. We didn't have that information in the meeting after that, that we could've rescinded it. We didn't have any of the information for the first three months.
Right. And if the-
There's no requirement in my memory to rescind within a certain number of meetings.
Now, there's a parliamentary rule that you reconsider at the meeting following the meeting at which you took the-
But what about extinguishing circumstances? What's the rules come into play?
Right now, the other circumstances here, which we have no control over, trump anything that's parliamentary. This appeal that we have, we have to respect what the stay is from the Department of Natural Resources and from the Inspection and Appeals. If they say next Monday that they think the stay should be lifted, you're gonna be back where you were two meetings ago. And at that, the last thing in our minutes with our clerk from two meetings ago is that we should proceed. So at that point, if you're saying that in the event the stay is lifted, that you want to reconsider the motion to proceed, that's what I think your motion is right now.
We can impose it whenever we want. I believe that the rule that you're referring to is if you wanna do a rescission, you have to do it earlier than the next meeting. That's not the limit as to when you can do it. You can rescind a prior motion whenever you want. The earliest you can do it is the next meeting, not the same meeting where the motion passed.
And you can always do it with the permission of the council by just defeating the ruling of the chair, which, from my perspective here, the mayor was asking me, what do I recommend? And I thought the ruling of the chair is probably that this is not timely. But that's my opinion as far as parliamentary.
That's not in coherence with the experience of this council. That rule is not in coherence with what we have done. In fact, we have often, I would guess, if we carefully look at it, made motions on actions that were not, made motions on items that were not on the agenda.
Agreed. So, you know, I'm not gonna harshly argue that. I just felt like this was a very important issue, that it would be nice to know where we stand after next week's meeting. However, we're in the discussion portion, so what questions or discussion more about this motion?
I think that it would be prudent for us that after, if we put a hold on it by council, then we get the opinion of the Inspection and Appeals, and then we can have another conversation about the right way to proceed.
And we allow them to bring their gentleman up from Missouri and look at it. Can he come up here and say, "You can't do it for us until a hundred fifty thousand dollars"? I don't know what he's gonna say. And they don't know either, because it hasn't happened yet. Why don't we find out what the answer is and get this settled?
Please don't clap. I mean, I would appreciate it if you wouldn't clap. I know you're cheering for that, but again, this is a business meeting. We need to hear people, and when you clap, we, I can't hear, and these sides can't hear each other. So it's important that we just all listen.
I'm just kinda curious, what information do we not have previously? Because you just mentioned, Terry, that you, we didn't have this information.
We didn't have the lake we drained when we made the decision.
We didn't know it for, I don't know, how long.
I mean, there were just, it was just more and more would come out, the, you know, changes to what we thought the original plan was. I never, and maybe I wouldn't have cared, I don't know. But if we were planning on draining the lake, I would, thought we would've talked about it in that meeting when we made the decision to do this style of bridge that we were going to do.
We did, but we didn't think eleven, and we still don't know, but eleven and a half minutes or two.
We didn't talk about it when we approved that, absolutely not.
We'd have to draw down. We didn't know that.
We talked about drawing down, because we were under the impression that the last time we did that, the lake was quite a bit deeper than that.
I think that conversation happened after we approved it. I really do. I could be wrong, but I don't think that we have that information when we made that decision.
That's my impression as well, Tom.
We had a lot of meetings.
Okay, so let's say, let's say, or let's say that maybe we got, we got that information. We didn't know entirely what that meant. Since that time, we have found out that the lake would have to be drawn down regardless of any bridge that was put there, even if we wanted to replace the bridge. And that's what Melanie said at our very last meeting. There would have to be a drawdown just to remove all of those abutments.
To your point, we haven't heard from an engineer tonight. But to me, this design looks like it doesn't use abutments. It might use footings that are put ten feet away from the lake that then support that. And that could be an expense that is incurred by whomever does the bridge.
But why would we off, why would we offload our own liability over-
Because it shouldn't have been our liability to begin with.
It shouldn't have been like this.
No, it's not. No, it's not. They signed a case law that shows that repair does not mean replace.
Um, okay.
It doesn't show this fact, you own the bridge site.
Yeah, I'm not gonna listen to that case law. Somebody's gonna go and petition the Supreme Court, "I didn't construct a bridge," because it says in my contract maintenance, like, you can't listen to somebody to say picking and choosing different things from legal opinions without knowing all of it.
That's fair.
So I think that, you know, the fact of the matter is, we had an engineer who looked, two engineers, multiple engineers who looked at all of the different options. So what information did you feel like we didn't get from them?
I think that we just got information later, after we'd already made a decision. Of certain circumstances that existed.
Information has changed your mind.
Well, I felt this way the whole time, but that's the size of the point, because I was the only one that felt that way, so.
Okay, when the DNR would change my mind, start to change my mind, I was like, DNR, I'm scared.
We've been meeting and discussing this since May of last year.
Sorry?
We've been meeting and discussing this issue since May of last year. Now, some people have become recently involved, but we've been meeting and discussing it since May of last year. That's over a year ago. And that includes meeting with the Ways and Means Committee, looking at the financial aspects of this project. It includes meeting with the Property Committee, looking at other aspects of the project. That includes closed sessions to discuss particular matters of the project. That includes public forums, we ask anyone who's interested to appear at the meeting. We publish these everywhere we're supposed to, on Facebook, on our Facebook page. You can go and see, we publish where we're supposed to according to law. We've invited everyone, begged everyone to show up, and now they show up. Where were you a month, where were you a year ago, May of twenty twenty-four? May of twenty twenty-four, we were telling you we were very interested in this project. We had to review it. We were inviting people to show. We had property committee meetings. We had Ways and Means meetings. We had several meetings of our full council. And we've been discussing it and analyzing it and reviewing it for months on end. We finally made a decision in March of this year, and we're proceeding. It was only until recently, I think this meeting, that we're hearing that there's some people in council who wanna change the decision. That's fine, but you have to go through a process, because we've already committed. We've signed the contract. We're liable, we're responsible. The city is, the city is. I trust the city government. I trust the people on this council. Do they make mistakes? Sometimes. But have you made a mistake in this case, based on what I'm hearing tonight, what I've heard in the several meetings? No. It's still the right decision. It's still the right decision. I think the best way is gonna, we're gonna prove this is the right decision is for us to do it. You'll see, you'll see that what we're doing is not causing the problems, the catastrophic problems you concerned yourself about. This reminds me of years ago, we had something, what was it? The grain bin elevators. It was taught, we were told that the grain bin elevators, if they're gonna be built, would be incredibly damaging to the city. We were gonna have layers of soot all over the city. We were gonna have roads torn up by the twenty-four hours of trucks running through the city from the grain elevators. What was built, and guess what? Turned out to be a nothing burger. I think when this is built, when this project is completed, we're going to have the same situation. You're actually gonna be, this is an odd thing, I'm gonna get some sneers, but you'll be thanking the city. You'll be thanking the city for what we've done, because it's going to improve the lake, improve the value of the people, the property, the people who live there. And all the citizens of the city are going to be able to enjoy a refreshed lake, a stronger structure with the bridge, and it'll be a benefit to all of us. So the idea of postponing it and delaying it and delaying until we finally give up, to me, is a non-starter. We've already done the due diligence. We've done it for months and months, and we have invited you. We continue to invite you. And I'm happy that you're finally on board with listening and paying attention, giving your input. I like your input. I appreciate your input. But I'm not hearing anything that changes my mind. I'm not hearing anything that changes the direction the city should go. So we're gonna continue. I mean, there could be other council members that feel otherwise, that's, they're right. But I, but I trust the council. I think people up here are trying to do the best they can. They are doing the best they can. Maybe it's not what you agree to, maybe it's not what you agree with, but we're doing the best we can now. We're gonna continue to do the best we can. And right now, for me, it means continuing in the direction we've already started over here.
Matt, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any comments?
I see no harm personally in giving the residents of Walton Lake the opportunity to bring up their man from Missouri to look at it. And if we're given details of the quality of the bridge and how it might affect the liability, and if the bridge is strong enough. And if the man from Missouri, who is a bridge constructor, does feel he can build a bridge for cheaper, and they want to pay for it, I don't see any, I don't see any risk on our side in letting them take the initial steps. So that's where I stand. I think that there is a very high chance that we will find out that they can't build the bridge for less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we might be surprised.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, a couple things I, I'm really intrigued. Mr. Gibson's idea tonight looks great. This is the first time I've seen something like this, and I'm intrigued. I don't know where it's gonna go from there, but I am. There were a few things that were kind of thrown out as fact, that we kept this secret. I'm chair of Ways and Means, and we had one of the first meetings on this. And it was so well-attended that we had to move it into this room, because so many people were here. And I see a few people here today that were at the first meetings. We went through a number of those meetings. And there was never a concern or a question or anything raised by anybody when we asked in the direction that we're moving. And that gave us the go-ahead to move forward with where we're going. The fact that Walton wants to take it over was one of the very first options we proposed to them. And it was quickly, flatly denied, turned down, that they had no interest, the board had no interest in taking over, doing any construction on the bridges. We thought that might be the best alternative at the time, too. That was vetoed right away by Walton Board. And I understand why. I understand the position. So, and I can't say I blame them for it either. So we've moved forward on this, on every step we've done so far, thinking and really knowing- So we've moved forward on this, on every step we've done so far, thinking and really knowing we're going in the right direction. It's frustrating on our end, very frustrating on our end. We don't enjoy this at all, trust me. But I love the passion, I wish it would have been here a year ago when we had these meetings. It wasn't, we never heard any objection at the time. We've done a lot of work, we've moved a long way, and I don't think stopping now is is the right move. It's going to cost us more, it's this, this culvert system and replacing the bridge. The the reason we chose that is because it was cheaper than repairing the bridge that's currently there and making it structurally sound. It was cheaper for us to put a culvert system in than it was to repair the bridge that's there. I still, I stand by every decision we made, whether you agree with me or not, you know, that that's totally your prerogative, I understand. But I don't think stopping or pausing or turning around at this point is a good idea. I don't think there's a better option out there, and we've done a lot of research. If Mr. Hip's idea comes in, and, you know, he's got plenty of time to come, we don't meet again for another two weeks. We can't blow down anything right now. If he comes in with a with a good idea, great, but we haven't seen one yet, is all I got to say.
Okay, with that, any other comments? Will you please read the motion again one more time?
To place a pause on the Walton Golf Club Bridge project and allow Walton Lake Community and Golf Club to implement a different plan.
Is that quite what I said?
Okay. Doug, does that have to be, let's say, doesn't this council have to approve that for that plan? Is that what you're thinking in the end?
Okay, someone wants to modify the motion, they're welcome to, but my motion was to place a pause on the project and allow the Walton Lake Community, meaning the people who are owners of property around the lake and other people in the city who are also interested in coming to various meetings, so I don't want to exclude them. In cooperation with the Walton Golf Club to okay, I had written here implement a solution, but let them bring their gentleman up from Missouri to explore the options and see if they can implement an alternative plan that they have in mind.
Does that mean present it to the council?
I presume they would come here before they actually pull the trigger on it, yes.
Wait, wait.
Well, without a proper replacement plan, we wouldn't cancel it, so.
Right. I mean, presumably, although it's unclear whether whether we can and whether we are obligated to do that in the first place.
What do you mean by pull the trigger?
Start the project.
Who?
The Walton, the Walton Club and the community there. They want to implement one of these bridges. You know, I think they would be very courteous, probably come here and tell us what they're doing. And what, I expect to get a report from the gentleman who comes up from Missouri and to come and talk to us upon, I suppose. I mean, it could be a cooperative thing, it doesn't have to be, we hand it over to them and and forget about it.
Well, I think that's what your motion says.
You want me to reword it and say, okay, they'll make a report back to us, and we'll have a cooperative arrangement because we're all members of the same community. Get all that? Do I have to spell that out really? I mean, really start to spell that out in the motion?
It's your motion, I just don't understand, that's all.
Okay, so, well, you worded in a way that.
No, no, I'm not making a motion.
Well, you want to make an amendment to us.
No, I don't.
You are making an amendment.
No, I'm trying to understand it, that's all. Just understand, what's the language that you said, so what thing, what is it?
Put a pause on the project.
Okay, I got that.
That the Walton Lake Community and cooperation with the Walton Golf Club to explore this alternative plan that they have, allow their gentleman from Missouri to come up here and look at the construction site and give his opinion as to whether it would be feasible for one of his bridges. It hasn't happened yet, we don't know if it would, and offer, I guess you'd give us a quote, or a yield quote. And let them, if you wanted to come here for us to like see it and approve it, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm, I'm.
What is your motion?
That's, that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking you to just ask what it is, that's all.
Why don't you just make it simple, Doug?
I'm trying, John.
And say, um, put it on pause until alternatives have have been executed.
Okay. Put them, uh, write the motion, put the project on pause.
Because there's a lot then that has to happen after that.
Yes.
So it's even implement anything.
And allow the Walton Lake Community and the Walton Golf Club to explore alternatives.
Okay, okay.
Can I have some more discussion?
Applies that.
I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Knowles.
Yeah, sir, read back the motion, I just changed this, let's have her read it back before.
Okay, hang on, John.
Change it before we.
Please. Walton Golf Club Golf Car Bridge Project on pause and allow for alternative to be explored.
Well, mention the two communities that are going to be involved, I guess, without the Walton.
By the Walton Lake Community and cooperation with the Walton Golf Club.
Okay. So now we can, let's discuss fashion quick one more time, John, what's your comment?
I'd like to ask Ed, this is a friendly question, Ed. If you would consider asking the Inspection and Appeals to delay the hearing pending whatever comes of this motion.
I think that is a very fine idea, and I would one hundred percent agree with it.
Okay.
All right, now tell you the reason that I think that's important.
And John, will you repeat that one more time?
I've asked him if he will communicate with Inspection and Appeals that there should be a continuance of the hearing scheduled on my request for an expedited hearing next Monday. But that that should be continued because of this motion, which is pausing the project. That you're understanding, Ed?
I think it should be a mutual approval, John, to continue.
So that's, you're saying if this, if we haven't voted, so you're saying if this passes, you want me to do that?
Here's my concern, is if we mutually agree, Ed, the city's basically conceding some liability to our contracted form bid holder that hasn't said a word in this whole dispute so far. And they're expecting to see the results of the appeal next week to determine if they can go forward with anything this fall. So if that's going to be postponed, I want it to be your request that it be continued while the residents are having an opportunity to explore that option. It isn't the city that wants to explore the option as much as your residents, having it explored. Otherwise, we're setting up the city for an exposure to liability with a third party, the contractor that already owns the contract.
Oh, I'm happy to make that motion, John.
All right, that's.
If that's what you'd like, then you have to do it.
So I I am concerned about the timeframe here because of that issue, you know. I hate to ask for another.
No, we have a motion, we have a second.
Okay, okay, just just know that we can't, we can't pause until a year from now.
This is a suggestion from our city attorney, council makes the decision.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's, let's call a roll, see if it passes. Floro.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Gandy.
No.
Tuhel.
No.
Esti.
No.
Kennesaw.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a three-three vote, that's a tie, it does not move forward. So let's move on to resolution action items and ordinances. So the next action, the first action item is consideration of engineering services agreement with French Renniker Associates for aerial services. This came out last meeting and was tabled until now, there was no action. It looks like if, I'm just going to say, if, my understanding is if the, if we put in a boat ramp with a cost of about twenty-five hundred dollars, DNR can do this water part for free. And so the aerial services may, doesn't sound like are needed. That, I'm getting a head shake from Melanie that that's correct, so obviously, a boat ramp is going to be a little less expensive than the aerial services agreement with French Renniker, so. So the aerial services agreement would have gotten shoreline, and anything above the water, DNR only is going to do below the water. But yes, so there would have been some doubling up, and I think at this point, that the, this agreement just gets tabled or canceled or voted no on or whatever the proper procedures are, and that we can bring it back if needed going forward since DNR will handle the stuff in the water.
We just said you take no action, right?
Yeah, that works for me. But I guess I do want to point out, though, that DNR can only do their work if we install a boat ramp, which council has not directed staff to do yet, so just bringing that up.
Can we start tomorrow?
Um, it's not on our agenda, so you can't direct staff to do it, but I have done an estimate, I've talked with Joe Hurd and DNR on what would be necessary in order to build it and do a rock. A rock boat ramp with some larger stone and then capping it with some smaller stone and and then using some baller or some wood posts and some chain. You see a lot of county parks that have parking lots that are similar to that, that we can use to outline the boat ramp, and it came up to be two thousand five hundred dollars for the materials, not, so that would not include any of the city's labor.
It would really be nice if we get them into the lake this fall, that's what they really want.
Yeah, their schedule would not allow them to be, at this point, they would not be in there this fall, at least not to do the sonar. I don't know about the fish or anything as far as that, but yeah, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, so I I thought the drawdown was going to interfere with that, but apparently, we might get a squeeze in.
And I'm not su- and I will need to talk to DNR on how, so part of the boat ramp has to be under the water, and if you're doing a concrete boat ramp, you build it on shore and you push it into the water. If you're doing a rock one, I need to talk to them a little bit about how our guys would construct that without the lake being lowered. And so I can, I will get some more information for the next meeting.
Okay, so your plan right now is if we put the boat shore again now, they would come in next spring and do the analysis?
To do the LIDAR, I don't have any answer on when they were going to do any of the other things because of the stay, because of the state here. We're not allowed, city, the city staff is not allowed to talk to DNR. Marcus had reached out to them, and they said that their schedule for the contours would be in the spring. General consensus, is that okay? We take no action? Okay, and then, yeah, we'll put that on the agenda next time, the boat ramp, the boat ramp. Okay, uh, next action item, consideration of change order number two for the.